Hi everybody, it's me, Big Ugly Jim. So if you're not an Albertan, who the fuck is Danielle Smith? Well, I'm glad you asked, not an Albertan. Danielle Smith is a politician here who has recently become the premier of Alberta, which if you're an American is kinda like being the governor of Alabama or whatever. Probably a pretty apt comparison, to be fair. Danielle Smith is no stranger to those around the Alberta parts. And we're gonna go through a little bit of her political story, and who she is, and what she stands for. And I'm gonna preface it all by saying, I'm not a fan. Not a fan. Alright, so, we're gonna start the easy way. So here's Danielle looking fierce and feisty. She's fierce, she's feisty. Someone just drove a loud vehicle near my home, which is not uncommon. Yes, the Alberta premier, not elected by the people of course, because that's just silly talk. What happened was Jason Kenny, who is a giant crap sack of a human being, eventually decided that he would step down. He left as being the leader of the party, and left it open to the party to choose a new leader, and this was the best they could do. She poetically updated her own wiki, did she seriously? That's fucking awesome. So we're going to ignore this, and we're gonna go to like the early career stuff, cuz this is where it starts. After her time as a school board, oh, no, she was a school board trustee. That's what I wanted to start with. Well, we'll do the background. Marlena Danielle Smith was born in Calgary on April 1st, 1971. Just the ass end of the FLQ. Interesting. And is the second of five children. Her paternal great-grandfather was Philippus Colodniki, a Ukrainian immigrant whose name was anglicized to Phil Smith upon his arrival in Canada in 1915. Growing up, her family lived in subsidized housing, so she has that. We was from the Poes and we pulled ourselves up by our bootstraps vibe. Oh yeah, she probably does update her own. I thought you meant poetically, like there was gonna be some section like, "Is Danielle Smith the greatest leader of all time?" One could say, one could. So Smith attended, sorry, she identifies as having indigenous ancestry, though she has not given any evidence to support her claim. Wow, that's uncommon. I also am 1/64 Cherokee Princess, you fucking tool. Smith attended the UFC and acquired a Bachelor of Arts degree in English and in economics. While at university, she was active with the federal and provincial progressive conservatives, and won the presidency of the campus PC club. Smith's work in public policy began with a one-year internship with the Fraser Institute in 2006. She married, sorry, in 2006 she married David Moretta, a former executive producer with Sun Media. So the Fraser Institute is an interesting group. It's a right-wing think-a-tank-a. And that's pretty much where their origin story was. They were a Canadian group designed to prove that tobacco smoking wasn't bad for you. I have this thing about that. You know, as a tobacco smoker, who knows exactly how stupid I am to be a tobacco smoker. I'm always like, wait a second. You founded an organization that was like, "We're gonna prove that smoking is good for you." "We're gonna promote that narrative." And when you were wrong, you didn't go whoops-a-doodle and stop. You were just like, "Okay, we're gonna move on to like proving that oil is healthy. You should bathe in it." We do not claim her, exactly. I'm fairly certain that she'd have to go through some pretty serious fucking effort to prove even one drop of indigenous blood in her system, like fuck off. This is just, it's just a joke. She's a fucking, this is what every fucking right-winger does. They're like, "Oh yeah, yeah, we uh, we got indigenous ancestry, so you know, that gives us a certain carte blanche." Good old Sun Media, yes, Sun Media. The great bastion of fair and balanced journalism here in Canada. Why the fuck doesn't, oh, I guess I have to go up here to read about her being a school board trustee. Maybe not. They just like skipped that whole thing. So what happened was, and this is why this originally struck me as something I wanted to talk about. Is there anything in here that talks? Okay, here. It's apparently a little disjointed, so she must have edited herself. In 1998, Smith entered politics when she ran for the Board of Trustees of the Calgary Board of Education. She won, but less than a year later, the chairwoman complained that the board had become dysfunctional. In response, the provincial Minister of Learning Lyle Oberg dismissed the entire board. This was a huge thing at the time. So essentially, what was going on was, she was elected and was much like several other people that were on that trustee board. Just worthless and fighting always, and it was the only time I know of when the education minister was like, "Fine, we don't have a fucking school board now. Are you happy?" So not an auspicious start, but this is a thing that conservatives are really big on right now, the idea of running for local elections. Especially in the States, because everything is fucking elected in the States, you know. Run to be sheriff, run to be on the school board, run to blah blah blah. Because those are positions that can cause a lot of power to swing. And this honestly makes me kinda go like, maybe I should run the fucking school board. So my dad ran for the school board once upon a time, and this is why I've never even considered it. My dad is a former teacher, it was when he retired, he decided like, "Now is the time, I'm going to run for the election and I'm going to, you know, do so as a former teacher who understands and who wants to work with teachers and build a good educational environment for students." The hippie. And so they, he did not win. He came in, I think, fourth or sixth or something? I think it was after this school board being dismissed, but I'm not 100% sure on the timeline. Although I'm pretty sure it was, cuz I was married, I was, I think, out of college, and if I'm not mistaken, this was the time. Anyways, my dad ran, did not place, was not in the running. The guy that won was like a former MLA backbencher who had to, you know, had to take some time off from politics, was wanting to get back into the scene, so he first dipped his toe in as a school board trustee, like, the school board is notoriously something Calgarians or anyone don't give a fuck about. So it's used as a stepping stone for political hacks. And here we have Danielle Smith doing exactly that, and doing it so fucking poorly that she got the old heave-ho. Do it, well, we'll see. You know, it will depend entirely on where my life is, the point where they're looking for the next election. Here in Victoria, we have a group called Viva for our civic and school board elections. It is the PPC party who are encouraging local representation and grassroots bottom-up long-term fight. I would vote for Jim. Yeah, but you'd be the only one. I don't even know if I'd vote for me. Sorry, here in Victoria, we have a group called Viva for our civic and school board elections. It's the PPC party, the People's, what's that, the People's Party of Canada, like the national version of the splintering of the conservative party that's happening right now. So you have the United Conservative Party. No, that's, that's provincially, so we have to, you have the shit, like, C, C, I can't fucking remember, I can't keep track. In my short life, we've had so many fucking conservative parties that it's just ridiculous, and they constantly rebrand, like, it was the progressive conservatives forever, and then it's been like bam bam bam, "We're now the Wild Rose, we're the crazy ducks, we're the swoopity boops." It's fucking annoying. The poo-poo of Canada, yes, they are. So it's the PPC party who are encouraging local representation and grassroots bottom-up long-term fight. This is right-wing across the border, like across the world right now, is really trying to engage people to run locally, especially in like unopposed elections for stupid shit nobody cares about. Rather than trying to run for like be god, you can run for like be nobody, but nobody with a little bit of a voice, and then you can help them push their agenda through. And the votes are in, how did we get negative votes? I would view for you, just to see what happens. Yeah, yeah, Max Bernier, Maxime Bernier is the head of the PPC. And he is pretty much garbage. Fuck it, let's watch the world burn, right? Honestly, and that would be my campaign slogan, it's like, "We can't possibly have fucked up worse than putting me in power." So anyways, yeah, she fucked up hard and got booted off of the Board of Education. That's some fuckery right there. Smith supported Ted Morton in the 2006 PC leadership election. Morton lost to Ed Stelmac. Here's a picture of Ed. "Hello, Ed, we don't miss you at all." And Smith became increasingly disillusioned with what she claims were Stelmac's free-spending ways. Smith cites the 2008 provincial budget as a turning point, where she determined that Stelmac's government had lost its way. Running on empty, empty promises, that is. So then, she got involved with the Wild Rose Party, which at the time, I very wittingly referred to as the Wild Rose Tea Party. Because it was. Essentially, you had what was then the, I believe, the Progressive Conservative Party. I believe they were still called the Progressive Conservative. And then you had this splinter group. So Smith quit the PCF, Progressive Conservative Party, in 2009 and joined the Wild Rose Alliance. The Tories sent Rob Anderson, one of the more fiscally conservative members of the caucus, to talk Smith out of it. Years later, Smith recalled that Anderson told her that despite the Tories' reckless spending and unwillingness to listen to the backbench, they were the only credible center-right party in the province. Smith refused to stay, saying that there was no hope of restoring Alberta to fiscal sanity under the Tories. And that the Wild Rose was the only credible chance at electing a fiscally conservative government. As far as she was concerned, she told Anderson, "The Tory government is beyond redemption, it's out of control." Oh my fucking god, my uncle's supporter of, a lot of people, so this is the thing, is what was happening at the time, the PC party was pissing away money, absolutely. This is pre-Ralph Klein, remember Ralph? No, it was post-Ralph Klein. Stelmac was not a popular leader. He came in after Ralph Klein left. And I think like dropping a penny out of, you know, the mass, into the massive void that Klein had left would be considered reckless spending. And so Smith would have seen that apparently as like, you know, they're out of control and we're going to destroy, cuz Klein was very focused on destroying public education, support for post-secondary education, public health, all of that. He cut hundreds of millions of dollars from the budgets of all of those. That money was not something that needed to go. And then Stelmac, if memory serves, like Stelmac basically was like, "We're going to try and have systems still." And the Wild Rose, who are, were very much a libertarian party, were like, "This is bullshit, we should be doing more, we should be killing more innocent people." Yeah, Ralph was reckless decline in popularity than Wild Rose. Ralph bucks Preston Manning, Preston Manning was the federal side of that. It was the Reform Party that, "Reform, I love that word." Preston Manning was garbage. I believe he also does like the Fraser Institute and all that shit. But he was the federal part, version of this. The Wild Rose sort of came out of that and was the same sort of mentality of far-right, like libertarian right or anarcho-capitalists. I got my 400 bucks. I did not get my Ralph bucks. Sad, sad day. Yeah, the Conservative Reform Alliance Party, or crap. Anyways, so Tory government beyond redemption, out of control. Later that year, Smith was recruited by Wild Rose officials to run for the leadership of the party. During the course of the leadership campaign, outgoing leader Paul Hinman won in a by-election in the riding of Calgary Glenmore. His win meant he was one of the four in the Wild Rose caucus. By the time Smith was elected leader on October 17th, support for the party had quadrupled since the 2008 election. This is the thing, again, they are populists. And they say all the right buzzy buzzy words to make John Q. Public think that they're, you know, they're on our side. That's never what happens. What ends up happening always is that you're just talking about rabid conservatives who want to destroy, you know, every bit of public spending that there is. In the case of like a libertarian or anarcho-capitalist kind of party. Went he grin BC though, why is everyone in love with Preston? Everyone loves Preston because he was, he's the son of Ernest Manning, who was a famous Canadian politician. He's a very outspoken, you know, he created the, originally the Western Reform Party and later the Reform Party. And he was the face of that party in its early days before evil Stockwell Day took it away from him. And a lot of people, like, you know, he is a Fraser Institute schmuck. He is one of these like, you know, big faces of the libertarian conservative Tea Party style Christian bullshit conservative world. So everyone loves Preston because he was that guy. I guarantee you, if you went back in time and went to his high school, not everyone loved Preston. I bet he spent a lot of time in lockers. So social credit, we should do a thing where we look at the different flavors of right-wing politics, cuz social credit is kind of different than like ANCAP or libertarian right or progressive right or, and there's so many flavors, and it's, I think it would be an interesting, maybe we'll do that another time. Go through the different kinds, like social credit, I still to this day don't really understand. I know that when I was campaigning with my buddy Kevin, the guy that, I think he came in like sixth of seven or sixth of eight or whatever, and the guy, one of the guys that he beat was a social credit candidate, so that's still a thing. A bit further to the right than Genghis Khan. How the Flying Fungus did social credit and NDP both start out of roots from Alberta? I don't get it. I don't understand how farmers are members of the UFA, which is a fucking union, and they're like, "You know what's terrible? Workers' riots." I don't fucking, the world does not make sense. Nothing makes sense. So anyways, after Smith was elected leader, support for the Wild Rose Party continued to grow. I remember people being like, "Say they got a Lydian leadership, that means they're progressive." No. Smith convinced three PCs who served in government across the Florida to join the Wild Rose Party, Rob Anderson and Heather Forsythe, and later Guy Bultilier or whatever. I'm sure it's Alberti, it's probably Guy Butler. In early 2011, she was featured in an episode of CBC Television's Make the Politician Work. 2012 election, for the first time before the 2012 provincial election, it appeared that Smith was poised to become the first woman to lead a party to victory in an Alberta election. Numerous polls indicated that the Wild Rose Party could defeat the governing PCs, who were also led by a woman, Premier Alison Redford. Redford was terrible, genuinely terrible. And yeah, it was very real that we believed that the PCs were going to lose to the Wild Rose. Cuz the idea of a non-conservative government in Alberta is sort of like imagining, like, you know, what would the world be like if Mary was an atheist? Don't confuse farmers coming together for monetary reasons with UFA aka farm oligopoly with Labour Party or socialism. I don't know enough about the UFA. I know that the UFA was like a right-leaning party at one point too. So I'm certainly not, you know, I don't know enough about it to actually comment on that. But it's definitely, it's a farming co-op that is, you know, it's a co-op, but it's still pretty fucking, pretty fucking right-leaning. So the Wild Rose Party won 17 seats on 34, 4.3% of the popular vote, and took over official opposition status from the Alberta Liberal Party. Smith was elected to the legislature from Highwood just south of Calgary on the same day, defeating Jean Barlow, editor of the Oketoke's Western Wheel. So yeah, they became, she was the head of the official opposition. Which I believe the party in power was the PCs, if I'm not mistaken. And if I'm not, if I'm thinking of the right election, the PCs kind of only won because they were like massive campaign of, "Hey, if you don't vote for the PCs, the Wild Rose Nazis are gonna win and you don't want that. So we're at least shitty that you know." And that worked. And I remember railing about that and just being like, "Nooo." There are other options than the other conservative party, for fuck's sake. Political pundits suggested Wild Rose lost the early polling over the PCs due to Smith's deference to two Wild Rose candidates who had made controversial remarks. Controversial remarks. Alan Hansberger, running in Edmonton riding, had written a blog post claiming that gays would end up in a lake of fire. That's a controversial statement. And Ron Leach, sorry, if they did not renounce their lifestyle. Ron Leach had claimed he would have a leg up on the competition in his Calgary riding because he was white. According to the National Post, Hansberger and Leach's extreme views, as well as Smith's refusal to condemn them, cost her a chance of unseating Redford. Ultimately, Wild Rose was denied victory mainly because it was unable to get any foothold in the urban areas. It won only two seats in Calgary and was completely shut out in Edmonton. Edmonton is always a lot more left-leaning in their electoral, you know, who they pick than Calgary. Calgary is, we're an oil and gas town, and all we care about is, I wanna make sure we're paying as little in taxes as possible. So we always vote almost exclusively for whoever the conservative party de jour is. Whereas Edmonton is usually like, "Fuck you, we're going to do a thing, it's very different." I don't know why I made Edmonton sound like Quebec, they're not in Quebec, they're in Alberta. Whatever. In appraising the election results, the Wild Rose 2012 annual general meeting, Smith advocated freezing out candidates who cannot respectfully communicate their views in future elections. Smith asked members to adopt a forward-looking policy platform for the next election. Let's take a moment now, my kid showed me this, I'll see if I can find it. Danielle Smith, smoking. Smoker, this is it. Here. Here is an article, "Anti-Smoking Lobby Does More Harm Than Good." So yeah, Danielle Smith actually said this, "Moderate cigarette consumption can reduce traditional risks of disease by 75%." Let's take a look at the image. "The Death of Barb Tarbox, notable in Canada because packs of cigarettes." Do I have barb on my pack? No, I don't, I have a pregnant lady. Have, often have a very gruesome picture of this woman dying from tobacco use and still smoking. And that's Barb Tarbox. "The death of Barb Tarbox last Sunday started off a week of notable events in the battle to rid the world of tobacco." Tarbox was an unusual spokeswoman for the cars, a two-pack-a-day smoker to the end. She was critical, criticized for preaching a message she herself didn't practice. She still managed to inspire many thousands of people to quit smoking or never stop. But if a person such as Tarbox could ever manage to quit smoking, and there are millions like her, it's obviously the goal of a smoke-free society is unachievable. What's really needed is a renewed effort to create safer cigarettes. Why not? Automobiles are outfitted with seat belts, airbags are designed to better withstand collisions and prevent rollovers. Whatever it takes to reduce deaths. The tobacco industry should be well on its way to developing lower-risk cigarettes, but the anti-smoking zealots have stood in the way. This is written by Danielle Smith, published in newspapers. "What the message that this week of the World Health Organization Anti-Smoking Treaty, even more habitual smokers will be sentenced to die." "The Framework Convention on Tobacco Control commits signatories to pass legislation which forbids wording on packages such as low tar, light, ultra-light, or mild, which creates the false impression that a particular tobacco product is less harmful than other tobacco products." "It prescribes litigation to crack down on tobacco companies, commits governments to assist tobacco growers in phasing out production, seeks to ban all tobacco advertising, including on the internet, and even encourages bans on the sale of cigarettes through vending machines." "This is an entire section devoted to the illicit trade in tobacco products, likely to become its most important section. Once cigarette smoking in production becomes illegal, the direction this convention seems headed, the tobacco market will become the domain of smugglers, drug lords, and organized crime." I'm surprised she didn't say globalist, I mean like, to be honest, or at least international jury. "At the risk of being sent to a re-education camp, Article 12D requires signatories to legislate appropriate trading or sensitization and awareness programs for the media. This approach is wrong-headed." "The same day the convention was adopted, Florida's 3rd District Court of Appeal threw out $145 billion US punitive judgment against five major US tobacco companies, and decertified the class actions. Smokers will have to challenge the tobacco industry individually if they want compensation. So far, only one smoking case has been successful, and it took five years of appeals before the plaintiff record received his 1.1 million US award in 2001." "Obviously, litigation is now a less effective weapon in the anti-smoking arsenal. Research does not always support the anti-smokers perspective either. The WHO states that scientific evidence has unequivocally, unequivocally, shit, now I lost my place, established that exposure to tobacco, smoke causes death, disease, and disability. Yet this month, the British Medical Journal reported on a study that found exposure to secondhand smoke does not increase the risk of developing cancer, heart disease, or obstructive pulmonary disease." "Indeed, before the tobacco research was completed by a political agenda, the epidemiological evidence was far from conclusive. This lost body of research appears in the book Virtually Safe Cigarettes, reviving an opportunity once traditionally rejected by Dr. Giobata Gori. He cites epidemiological studies which found smokers of just three to four cigarettes a day have no increased risk of lung cancer, coronary heart disease, bronchitis, or emphysema. A study of moderate smokers, those who consume up to, or one to 14 cigarettes a day, found no difference in lung cancer mortality rates. Mortality from all diseases was actually higher in the non-smokers." Take that, big non-tobacco. "The World Health Organization claims there is no safe level of tobacco consumption, but that does not appear to be true. And even if it were, the evidence shows more moderate cigarette consumption can reduce traditional risks of disease by 75% or more. Shouldn't smokers be told?" Makes you think. "Between 1968 and 1979, the National Cancer Institute was working with the tobacco industry to create virtually safe cigarettes which would minimize or eliminate the hazardous components in tobacco smoke. Researchers were making progress in breeding new tobacco varieties with lower nicotine tar yields, creating more effective filters, using inert additives to dilute tobacco and smoke potency. More than 150 experimental cigarettes were produced, many with dramatically reduced tar levels. Then abolitionists took charge. Experiments were canceled midstream and the multimillion-dollar research program was dismantled. "It should be a foregone conclusion that many lives were thus lost to an intransigent anti-smoking crusade in the last quarter of the century," writes Gori. "Who should bear witness to this tragedy? Governments whose tobacco taxes make them the primary beneficiary of tobacco sales share a moral obligation with tobacco companies to develop safer cigarettes. Unless they take up the challenge, millions more lives will be lost." Fuck me. Like, what in the green fuck? Best voice, fuck's sake. Unequivocal, yeah, I had trouble with that one for some reason. "Without all the additives possibly mildly true, smoke cleans the air, that's why we smudge, but this is bullshit." The difference, I think, is like, smoke is always carcinogenic. When you're doing things like smudging or, you know, you have a cooking fire or whatever, you're not exposed to a whole lot of smoke. When you are smoking, no matter what, you are inhaling directly like smoke. So it's not good for you. It's not necessarily like horrible compared to smoke with all of the additives in it, but it's still not good for you. And something like smudging, like you're not smudging 25 smudge packs a day directly into your face, right? You're, you know, that's a whole different monster. But the end result of burning is never, you know, good outputs. But that said, there's, so there's glimmers of truth in that. So for example, absolutely, the cigarette companies are not the ones making the lion's share of money off of a pack of cigarettes, if I'm not mistaken. It's like ridiculously high percentage of tax. It's all sin tax, and there are people who have made the claim that governments go through things like putting warning labels on cigarettes is a empty gesture as a means to try and convince people that smoking is bad, but not convince them enough that they would actually quit. Now, I don't know, I mean, like, there's probably truth in there somewhere. But the reality is that, you know, absolutely the government is very two-faced in this. That doesn't mean the rest of what Danielle Smith is saying. The comment, "Cigarettes can make you stay alive longer." Like, I'll give you an actual thing. I went to a neurologist cuz I was Like, I'll give you an actual thing. I went to a neurologist because I was worried about, um, I cough sometimes. Uh, both because of being a smoker and also because of having some serious fucking annoying seasonal allergies. And one day I was coughing and I did that thing where my hand was shaking and trembling. And then it recurred to me and I was like, that's not fucking normal. Why, what? So I was like, well, what the fuck is wrong with me? I have a father who has Parkinson's and I was like, bullshit. I hope this isn't like early onset Parkinson's. So I talked to my doctor. My doctor's like, I don't think that's the case. I want you to see a neurologist. Went and saw the neurologist. Neurologist was cool. I, I'm like, it's perfectly normal. Basically, when you cough, you're spiking adrenaline and, uh, I happen to be kind of a muscly fella. And when you get a spike of adrenaline, it's very common. It's the same when you, when you have a coffee and you get, you know, shaky hands. It's because what's happening is like, basically we have, um, opposite side muscles that are, are a little bit, you know, engaged and they're trying to keep things straight. What happens is this one goes, oh, I'm pulling a little bit of, oh, 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 I gotta correct, oh, da, da, da. And so you, you wiggle a little bit. And that is ultimately what I was experiencing is because of the amount of adrenaline coursing through my hand, I was just having a, a really bad shake. Still not cool, but not the end of the world. But in the conversation, we talked about my father and the, the Parkinson's and he said, I have two questions for you. Number one, did he ever live off of like well water or did he live off of well water? And I said, well, you know, there would have been a time in his life where, uh, when, you know, he was a young man, he lived on the farm, absolutely. I don't know about, you know, whether or not the, the place he was living, uh, you know, in the city had well water or if it was, you know, like, I have no way of knowing. But I know that he certainly would have had well water for some of his youth. And he goes, and was he a smoker? And I go, yeah, he was. He goes, oh, that's actually bizarre. How, did he quit, right? And I was like, yeah, he quit like when I was a kid. And I was like, okay, so this, this does fit our findings. So the, the only things we've really found as, as, um, clear correlations, uh, so far are we know that everybody that has Parkinson's once had a, a, a lot of, of, uh, exposure to well water. That doesn't mean that everyone who was exposed to well water will get Parkinson's. But everyone who has Parkinson's had exposure to well water. And also smokers tend not to get Parkinson's, like almost surprisingly. And I was like, so I should keep, keep smoking? And he was like, no. No. But Danielle saying, yes, you should keep on smoking and keep the flu away. Tar and shit clings to your lungs, look at a pipe or a bong. No, that's very true. But, um, so it's, it, to me, what it comes down to is, um, things like, uh, uh, pipes and bongs and smudging and all that stuff are far less dangerous than even a, a pure, uh, cigarette. But the fact that we're not getting pure cigarettes with pure tobacco, we're getting all kinds of fucking chemical shit that's designed to make us more addicted, designed to control the way it burns, all of that shit, like, none of that is good for you. Um, I'm a smoker, have allergies and asthma. I shake first thing in the morning and I have heavy metals in my body. I have no heavy metals personally because, um, I can't afford dentistry, but, uh, from well water? Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, uh, that, that does make some sense. Well, water obviously doesn't go through the same purification processes. Uh, anyways, that was, that was a bit of an aside. I just wanted to point out how cool Danielle Smith is, that she can be like pro tobacco. And, and this article, when was that from? Let me see if I can find it. Uh, when was that published? Uh, does it say? Oh, it doesn't say. Um, yeah, that's Herald columnist Danielle Smith. Doesn't say when it was published, but like, I guarantee you, that was well after the conversation was pretty cut and fucking dry about, about smoking. Like, what the fuck? All right, where were we? So rejoining the, uh, fuck, then I did it again. Rejoining the PC Party. After Redford left politics, uh, or did I, I'm, there's more. Yeah, there's more. Uh, no, there wasn't. Okay, so after Redford left politics in the spring of twenty fourteen due to allegations of corruption, that's the, uh, Redford again being the head of the PC Party. Smith's Wild Rose Party was initially the major beneficiary. However, this momentum stalled when the former cabinet minister Jim Prentice became PC leader and premier. I remember Prentice very well. He was the poster boy, like he was basically like the number two to Ralph Klein. He was not gonna lose, like there was just no way. She trolled back in time to the forties for fuck's sake. Yes, totally. Um, under Prentice, the PCs swept four by, uh, by elections in October. Smith was dealt the second blow at the Wild Rose Annual General Meeting, when an anti-discrimination resolution that she strongly supported was voted down while she was out of the room. That's right, they voted against an anti-discrimination rule. They were like, no, 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 no. What do you mean anti-discrimination? We're, we're a furit, not a ginnit. On December seventeenth, uh, Smith announced that she, deputy leader Robert Anderson and seven other Wild Rose MLAs were crossing the floor to join the PCs. Smith had criticized two other Wild Rose MLAs for defecting to the PCs a month earlier. She publicly stated that there'll be more four crossings. It was later revealed, however, that Smith and Prentice had been in talks about a possible merger for several months. Smith said that several conversations with Prentice revealed that they shared much common ground, particularly on fiscal issues. Ultimately, she concluded that it made little sense for her to continue in opposition. If you're gonna be the official opposition leader, she said, you have to really want to take down the government and really take down the premier. I don't want to take down this premier. I want this premier to succeed. Several weeks after Smith joined the, um, Progressive Conservatives in a Facebook post, she apologized for the anger caused by her move and for not consulting with Albertans before making the decision. At the same time, she stood by her decision to unify conservatives in the province and indicated that she intended to seek the PC nomination in Highwood for the next election. Smith was defeated in her bid for the PC nomination in Highwood by Oketoke's councillor Kerry Fisher. No relation to Princess Leia. Uh, on March eighth, our twenty eighth, twenty fifteen, Smith's defeat was attributed to her floor crossing, which angered many in her riding. Fisher then lost to Wild Rose candidate Wayne Anderson in the general election. In the intervening period, Smith went on to host a talk radio program on CHQR in Calgary. On January eleventh, twenty twenty-one, she announced that she was leaving her show and Twitter claiming, uh, citing attacks from Twitter trolls. Effective February nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, Smith then joined a private right-wing policy discussion group on locals dot com. In twenty twenty-one, Smith wrote an opinion article supporting Jason Kenny's referendum and equalization to be held on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, May twenty twenty-two, she announced that she was launching a campaign to seek the leadership of the UCP of Alberta after she resigned, or after the resignation of a sitting leader, uh, Jason Kenny. Smith was perceived to be the frontrunner among party members in the race to replace Kenny, according to international polling released to the Calgary Sun. Smith's central policy has been to enact what she calls the Alberta Sovereignty Act. If she becomes premier, the proposal argues for more autonomy for Alberta in confederation and calls on the provincial legislature to make determinations on when to ignore federal legislation which infringes upon Alberta's jurisdictions. In other words, state rights. Six of Smith's opponents in the leadership race have criticized the act, criticized the act. Jason Kenny described as a full frontal attack on the rule of law as well as a step towards separation and a banana republic. So that's why I went down the separation, uh, manhole. And the whole FLQ thing. In October sixth, or on October sixth, as she won the UCP leadership, uh, election with fifty-three point seven seven percent of the vote on the sixth ballot, uh, she was sworn in as the nineteenth premier just last week, October eleventh. Um, after being sworn in, and this is the thing that most people are giggling about right now. She said the people who were unvaccinated against COVID nineteen had been severely discriminated against, claiming that they have been the most discriminated group against group that I've ever witnessed in my lifetime. So Danielle Smith, savior of the tobacco industry. Other notable gaffes include getting booted out of the Calgary Board of Education for being so shitty at her job. Uh, but most recently made comments about them poor, unvaccinated souls. It's hard for me to take that shit seriously. Here's the thing. I don't know if people are aware of this, but vaccination wasn't a big fucking deal. I have said this before and I'll say it again. I'm not a fan of a mandate for vaccination from the government. As a libertarian, that hurts my feels. I am a left-leaning libertarian, just to be very, very clear. It hurts my feels when the government has to tell us what to do. But in the circumstances, um, I believe that the responsible thing to do is to take the vaccination. And the anti-vax movement, I have zero fucking friendship for because most of it is pretty closely tied with all kinds of other alt-right bullshit. Um, they got real good at, at sneaking into those, uh, those groups and it's not something I consider particularly awesome or cool. This is not the first stupid that Danielle Smith has said. Uh, it, it won't be the last stupid that Danielle Smith has said. Uh, defending people who were like, you know what, queers is gonna burn in hell, that was probably dumb. Running, you know, uh, election with a, a, a party that was like, you know what, anti-discrimination policies? Not for us. We're pro discrimination. That's fucking just messed up. First off, I want to say thank you for watching. If you've enjoyed, please like and subscribe. It really does help me out. Thank you to my patrons that support me on Patreon. Um, I am a little streamer and these people are all really awesome for supporting me. I try to put up stuff at least once a week and I livestream every Saturday at noon, uh, mountain time on Twitch, YouTube and Facebook, like an old man. Again, thanks for watching and have a kick-ass day.